Ms. Williams.
Aye.
Mr. Winn.
Aye.
Frame.
Aye. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the Norfolk City Council Chambers. We're glad to have you here. For your benefit, the process which we will follow tonight is the first thing we're going to do is take up public hearings, and the first public hearing will be nominations for the school board. At the conclusion of public hearings, we will move to the consent agenda, and there are a couple of matters there. The council can, if it desires, to vote on both of those matters at one time, and then we will move directly to the regular agenda. There are eighteen matters there, and I think we have one add-on for one appointment. At the conclusion, and by the way, we will vote on all these matters in the way that they are numbered on the printed docket. At the conclusion of the regular agenda, if any member of the public would like to address the city council on a non-agenda item, you'll be given that opportunity. But in order to have your name called, you must have first signed a slip of paper which the clerk has made available in the lobby behind the council chambers before the meeting began. All right, before we move to public hearing one, we do have one ceremonial matter, and Laurie Crouch is going to come up and introduce Florence Womack, who is the winner of the Love Virginia Photo Contest.
Right. Good evening, everyone. On May fourteenth, as you know, and I sent you some emails about it, we rolled out our first Love Norfolk VA Facebook photo contest. And in a two-and-a-half-week period of time, we received over a hundred photos. We had a panel of five judges whittle those photos down to ten, and our public voting began on June fourteenth. Excuse me, June fourth. And the criteria really was composition of photo, but most importantly, interpretation of the city of Norfolk, and what these folks felt was a good interpretation. And so I am pleased to present to you tonight Florence Womack, her friend, her brother, and her parents are here, and this is the picture that won by a vote. Waterside at night with fireworks.
Wow.
And this picture is right now featured on our Facebook page. It will take, be in several of our publications, and if you'd like to go ahead and stand.
Hey Laurie, can you show it to the people in the, yeah?
All right, and we have a gift for you. First of all, we'd love to have you say, make a comment about why you decided to enter this, and...
Um, I enjoy, I enjoy taking pictures as a hobby, and Waterside is a great place. This is your Fourth of July.
Okay. You can come claim the prize. Thanks very much. Thanks for coming in. Did you get all the photos that we need here? Okay. Thanks very much. Thank you. Okay. That concludes the ceremonial portion of tonight's meeting. Thank you for coming down. Florence, thank you. Really. And we will move directly then to public hearing number one.
Public hearing one for this day to receive nominations for appointment to the Norfolk School Board.
All right. This is that moment in time that the city council, according to state law, has scheduled the public hearing to receive nominations for the city's school board. There are three positions open, and what we'll do there, during the, our process has been really to receive names from people who've written to us, people who've called us, as well as people who appear and have them, their names placed in nomination tonight at the, at this meeting. But the name has to be mentioned this evening in order for us to, to consider it. And so the, first of all, we've had a couple of people sign up for public hearing one, and I'll begin by calling them. Daniel Montague.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Councilman, Mr. Jones. My name is Dan Montague. I live at forty-six oh five Creek Street here in the city of Norfolk. Once again, I am nominating myself as a protest candidate for the school board, for the simple reason is, we are the last city around here to not have an elected school board. With all the stuff that's going on the past year, I think it's about time to hold the school board accountable to the public. If they can't run it, then they need to be changed so that we can get people in there that can run it. And this has been going on way too long. And so, please, let's have an elected school board, okay? Thank you.
Thank you. Glenn Jones.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to, just to the clerk. Okay. Good evening, I'm the mayor, vice mayor, members of the council, Mr. City Manager. My name is Reverend Glenn Jones, and I come to you tonight for a passion of mine I've had for some time. First to nominate my name as a participant for the Norfolk Public School Boards. Meaning why? I've been involved with the educational process for some time in our city. I believe that we have a good educational system. Some things need to be worked out. I'll put our kids against any kid in any city or any state. That's how I feel about our school system as our kids. Well, there are some things that need to be worked out. There's some research that needs to be done. There's some things and programs that need to be added on to help our kids, especially those that are definitely, definitely in need. Our African-Americans are falling short greatly. There's a need. We have kids who get up in the morning and don't want to come to school. Parents need more involvement, definitely. There is a need. I've researched these programs. I've implemented programs for the school board, and quite a few times. And I feel as though I have something to give. Not only that, I have kids involved in the school system, so I have something also that my kids can value from. I believe that, once again, I believe that we have a great school system, but some things need to be worked out. And if I'm nominated, I will do my best to work along with others to research and bring research that will help. Out-of-the-box thinking, because that's what we need. Out-of-the-box thinking to help our school system. Thank you very much.
Thank you. There are, those are the only two folks who have signed up for public hearing one. There are three members of the, of the school board who are eligible for reappointment. One of them, by a letter today, Dr. Linda Horsie, has indicated that she does not wish to be reappointed. And some time ago, the Mrs. Kaufman, Suzanne Kaufman, indicated that she did not wish to be reappointed. But Dr. Linda McLoney is eligible for reappointment, and I've not heard for, from her, so I, my assumption is that she's willing to be reappointed until we hear something differently, so her name should go on the list to be considered. I have heard from a Mr. Edward Haywood, who lives on Newport Avenue in Norfolk, and he would like to be considered, and we have a, some biographical information there. We've heard Mr. Haywood from Jesse Scacia, who was asked that his name be, that he be nominated for the school board, and so we'll place his name in nomination as well. We have recently heard from, is it Noel? Noel M. Gabriel, who is a medical doctor in pediatrics, I think.
Oh, she's here.
She's here.
Noel.
Oh, I'm, I'm sorry. I didn't, we didn't have a name here. Doctor, would you like to stand up? Okay. Great. Okay. Well, thank you for your willingness to assist us on, on the school board. I've seen your, I've had a chance to look at your resume earlier today, and it's outstanding, so we'll place your name in nomination as well. Okay? Dr. Gabriel. And then, are there any members of the council that have any? Mr. Riddick.
Yeah. I had wanted to put Joseph Lindsay's name in.
I think you could still do that, by the way.
Okay. Okay. Joseph Lindsay, and also Rodney Jordan.
Are there any other names? Because the names have to come out right now if we're going to consider them.
I have two.
Okay.
Karen Fox.
Okay.
And Simeon Fuller.
Who was this heckling?
Simeon Fuller.
Okay.
I have one also.
Okay, sure.
Wendy Brodsky.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor. I have not spoken with either one of these people, but they were great candidates last year when we interviewed. I'm pretty sure they're probably still interested. But Martha Ambler and Matt Paddock, I did ask for Breck to provide a list of the names from last year, and if they're interested, I'd like to see if we can get them.
Any other names? That's, that's maybe twelve. Mr. Clerk, would you like to read those back for us?
Yes, sir. I have Dan Montague, Glenn Jones, Dr. McLoney, Mr. Edward Hayward.
Haywood.
Haywood. Jesse Scacia, Dr. Gabriel, Joseph Lindsay, Rodney Jordan, Karen Fox, Simeon Fuller, Wendy Brodsky, Martha Ambler, and Matt Paddock.
Okay. So how many is that all together, then? You have...
Thirteen.
Thirteen names. All right, now, we will, the council will vote to close the nominations. Are there any other nominations that anyone would like to make? Okay. So we have thirteen of them to consider. Then I get, the motion would be to close the nomination.
Mr. Burford.
Aye.
Mr. Protogiru.
Aye.
Mr. Riddick.
Aye.
Mr. Smigel.
Aye.
Dr. Webly.
Aye.
Ms. Williams.
Aye.
Mr. Winn.
Aye.
Mr. Frame.
Aye. Now, the process which the council has agreed on is that the clerk is going to provide us with a list. We would like to have all the resumes as quickly as possible from people who have made nominations, and then the council will decide by Friday who they were going to interview. And of the people who were, who have been nominated, of at least two council members will have to express their interest in having those people interviewed. We've, we've scheduled the interviews for next Tuesday, Tuesday a week from, from now, and of course, those interviews will be open to the public as well. Okay? Any other things that I leave out there, Breck? We got it all? Twelve o'clock?
Noon.
Twelve o'clock noon. Okay, twelve o'clock noon, right. Okay. Well, that concludes public hearing number one. Then we'll move directly to public hearing number two, please.
Public hearing two scheduled for this day to hear comments on the conveyance of a gemlot to Kearney Stevens &amp; All on property located at 121 East Indian River Road.
There's no one here signed up to speak on this matter, so you can, that's such a question, you can call the roll, please.
I have an ordinance authorizing the conveyance to Kearney Stevens, Angela S. McIntosh, Felicia Nicole McIntosh, Nicholas Stevens McIntosh, and Adrian Dionne McIntosh of a certain parcel of property acquired by the city pursuant to the Code of Virginia, and approving the terms and conditions of the conveyance agreement. Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt. Mr. Burford.
Aye.
Mr. Protogiru.
Aye.
Mr. Riddick.
Aye.
Mr. Smigel.
Aye.
Dr. Webly.
Aye.
Ms. Williams.
Aye.
Mr. Winn.
Aye.
Mr. Frame.
Aye. Public hearing three.
Public hearing three scheduled for this day pursuant to action of council on May twenty-two, twenty-twelve, to hear comments on the conveyance of a gemlot to Levy Harold on property located at eight seventy-four C Avenue.
All right, there's no one signed up to address the council on this matter either, so you can call the roll.
I have an ordinance authorizing the conveyance to Levy Harold Enterprises of Five LLC of a certain parcel of property acquired by the city pursuant to Code of Virginia as amended, and approving the terms and conditions of the conveyance agreement. Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt. Mr. Burford.
Aye.
Mr. Protogiru.
Aye.
Mr. Riddick.
Aye.
Mr. Smigel.
Aye.
Dr. Webly.
Aye.
Ms. Williams.
Aye.
Mr. Winn.
Aye.
Mr. Frame.
Aye. Public hearing four.
Public hearing four scheduled for this day pursuant to action of council on May twenty-two, twenty-twelve, on the application of Edward Legum for a change in proffered conditions on property zone conditional I-1 on property located at twenty-three oh one Tidewater Drive by seven zero vote. Planning Commission recommends approval.
And of Mr. Edward Legum, the applicant is here to answer questions if there are any, Mr. Legum? Okay, well, he's, he indicated he would be here, and Ellis Smith signed up, but she decided she did not want to, couldn't be present to speak, but she's in favor of the change. All right. So that's all who've signed up, and unless there are questions, you can call the roll, please.
I have an ordinance to rezone property located at twenty-three oh one Tidewater Drive in order to change conditions on property zone conditional I-1. Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt. Mr. Burford.
Aye.
Mr. Protogiru.
Aye.
Mr. Riddick.
Aye.
Mr. Smigel.
Aye.
Dr. Webly.
Aye.
Ms. Williams.
Aye.
Mr. Winn.
Aye.
Mr. Frame.
Aye. Public hearing five, please.
Public hearing five scheduled for this day pursuant to action of council on May twenty-two, twenty-twelve, on the application of Norfolk Redevelopment and Housing Authority for a change of zoning from R eleven moderate-density multiple-family and open-space preservation district to conditional R thirteen moderately-high-density multiple-family on property located at thirty-one oh one through thirty-three twenty-one Kimball Terrace by seven zero vote. Planning Commission recommends approval.
Mr. Morales from the Housing Authority is here to answer questions.
I have one question.
One question. Steve, will you want to come up?
Yeah, Steve. What is the difference between moderate-density multiple-family versus moderately-high-density?
I'm not exactly sure with the city code, but what we're attempting to do here is, we're tearing down actually one eight-unit building.
Right.
And we're looking to build back sixteen units on a slightly larger site, and they're going to be townhouse-style units. And according to working with the, the city planning department, that it was necessary for us to go ahead and make the zoning change in order to accomplish that.
Where is this? In proximity? The office? Room pool?
It's just south. This is in Grandy Village, and it's just south of the management office.
Okay. Okay, thanks. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Steve. All right. I call the roll.
I have an ordinance to rezone property located at thirty-one oh one to thirty-three twenty-one Kimball Terrace from R eleven and OSP to conditional R thirteen. Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt. Mr. Burford.
Aye.
Mr. Protogiru.
Aye.
Mr. Riddick.
Aye.
Mr. Smigel.
Aye.
Dr. Webly.
Aye.
Ms. Williams.
Aye.
Mr. Winn.
Aye.
Mr. Frame.
Aye. Public hearing four.
Public hearing four scheduled for this day pursuant to action of council on May twenty-two, twenty-twelve, on the application of Edward Legum for a change in proffered conditions on property zone conditional I-1 on property located at twenty-three oh one Tidewater Drive by seven zero vote. Planning Commission recommends approval.
And of Mr. Edward Legum, the applicant is here to answer questions if there are any, Mr. Legum? Okay, well, he's, he indicated he would be here, and Ellis Smith signed up, but she decided she did not want to, couldn't be present to speak, but she's in favor of the change. All right. So that's all who've signed up, and unless there are questions, you can call the roll, please.
I have an ordinance to rezone property located at twenty-three oh one Tidewater Drive in order to change conditions on property zone conditional I-1. Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt. Mr. Burford.
Aye.
Mr. Protogiru.
Aye.
Mr. Riddick.
Aye.
Mr. Smigel.
Aye.
Dr. Webly.
Aye.
Ms. Williams.
Aye.
Mr. Winn.
Aye.
Mr. Frame.
Aye. Public hearing five, please.
Public hearing five scheduled for this day pursuant to action of council on May twenty-two, twenty-twelve, on the application of the City Planning Commission to amend Chapter twenty-five of the zoning ordinance of the city of Norfolk nineteen ninety-two to modify provisions governing adult-use establishments abutting a residential zoning district, and by seven zero vote, Planning Commission recommends approval.
And Stephanie Gilbert, are you here? Okay, that's, that's fine. I just, she was here to answer, you're the proponent, and is here to answer any questions. Anybody have any?
I'm just wondering if Frank could explain to us what's going on with...
Sure. Mr. Duke, will you give us some explanation?
Mr. Mayor, members of council, this particular item is technically correcting a glitch that we made as staff when we developed the ordinance provisions for adult-use establishments in proximity to single-family residential. We had intended at the time we adopted these to, to ensure that we were not creating nuisance problems for single-family residential, and we inadvertently used an or when we meant to use an and. And so what it meant was properties that may not be developed with single-family residential but did have single-family zoning could not apply for the later hours. And so we, we realized, once we did this, we met with the city attorney's office, and we realized that we were placing additional obstacles that we had never intended to place on some properties.
Right.
With regard to when they would be able to seek later hours. Every property, when it comes in for the ABC establishment, will still have to go through the special exception process, so you'll be able to evaluate them on a case-by-case basis.
Right. All right, call the roll.
Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt. Mr. Burford.
Aye.
Mr. Protogiru.
Aye.
Mr. Riddick.
Aye.
Mr. Smigel.
Aye.
Dr. Webly.
Aye.
Ms. Williams.
Aye.
Mr. Winn.
Aye.
Mr. Frame.
Aye. C two.
C two is a letter from the city manager presenting the city planning commission's recommendation on the application of Nick's Diner for a general plan amendment and a rezoning, amendment of the zoning ordinance, and the recommended action is to authorize the clerk to advertise for a public hearing for July tenth.
Right, now...
Yeah, and I just, the reason why the separated, just, you guys were carbon copied on some emails from the Civic League in that area with opposition. It was explained to that Civic League that this really wasn't a vote today, which allowed them to be able to defend or speak on their case with this. We've, we are asking, and this one actually falls in line with when it will come on July tenth, we're going to try to schedule an Ocean View Task Force meeting to discuss this one and two other, I guess if you want to call them controversial issues down in Ocean View dealing with special exceptions, and I just wanted to make you aware of that, that we're going to try to talk it out in the community. I think there's some misinformation that's going around about all three of the issues, and we just want to make sure that everybody's clear on this.
Should we keep it the way it is, or just...
Yeah, I think it's fine. I think the, the issue here is not necessarily the special exception of eleven to six, because, you know, that's just a, it's not really a bar. It was mainly the, the rezoning it, because it's a residential zoning and putting it back at commercial, which is where most of the issue's coming from. We need to look at the general plan and the Ocean View corridor study a little bit better before we...
Okay, so we'll just, we'll go ahead and advertise it for July then, and if we have to change it, then we will.
We can move, yeah.
Okay.
Okay. Approve C two. Mr. Burford.
Aye.
Mr. Protogiru.
Aye.
Mr. Riddick.
Aye.
Mr. Smigel.
Aye.
Dr. Webly.
Aye.
Ms. Williams.
Aye.
Mr. Winn.
Aye.
Mr. Frame.
Aye. Mr. Smigel used the term carbon copy. I mean, you guys heard that. Heard CC. Does anybody know what carbon copy means?
He's the youngest.
He's as young as, he read about those, there's some words. Okay. Jeez. R one, please.
You dated yourself there, I mean.
R one is an ordinance granting a special exception to permit the operation of an automobile repair facility on property located at nine thirty-one and nine thirty-three Pecan Point Road, and this was passed by in May twenty-two.
And Mr. Manuel Angelo. Manuel is here.
No comment.
No comment, okay. All right, call the roll.
Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt. Mr. Burford.
Aye.
Mr. Protogiru.
Aye.
Mr. Riddick.
Aye.
Mr. Smigel.
Aye.
Dr. Webly.
Aye.
Ms. Williams.
Aye.
Mr. Winn.
Aye.
Mr. Frame.
Aye. R four.
An ordinance contributing a sum up to nine thousand dollars to Riverview Village Business Association for the purchase of two sets of decorative banners, appurtenances, and installation costs, granting permission to the association to encroach into the Granby Street right-of-way between the Granby Street Bridge and Thirty-Eighth Street, and approving the terms and conditions of the encroachment agreement.
Mr. Nuzbaum is here to answer any questions if, if there is. Bill, no questions, but thanks. Okay. Go ahead.
Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt. Mr. Burford.
Aye.
Mr. Protogiru.
Aye.
Mr. Riddick.
Aye.
Mr. Smigel.
Aye.
Dr. Webly.
I can't let this go by without, obviously Bill's here, and I appreciate his support, but the one that we all need to bow down to is Alice McCoy, who has more patience than Job on this. I've been on city council for six years. My entire tenure has been spent getting these banners. This has not been our finest hour, but I think we are on the road to success, and I hope this is going to give us new impetus to try to get these projects, because this is exactly what our city should be supporting. Citizens that are trying to improve their neighborhood and work hard to beautify our streets. So I hope in the future, this is going to no longer be the case, and this is going to be the last time we have to worry about delays. So absolutely aye.
Ms. Williams.
Aye.
Mr. Winn.
Aye.
Mr. Frame.
No, I mean aye.
(laughing).
R five.
An ordinance accepting and appropriating eight thousand dollars in grant funds if and when received from the EC Werheim Foundation, and authorizing the city manager to employ one person in the position on an intermittent part-time basis for as long as grant funds allow. Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt. Mr. Burford.
Aye.
Mr. Protogiru.
Aye.
Mr. Riddick.
I know you don't hear that from people too often up here. But the fact of the matter is that they have done a great job. And in this particular case, the fact that Alice Kelly went out to the site and took a look and discovered that there was foliage that was blocking the location, which could be a real problem, just shows you what a little bit of perseverance will do. And in this case, Mr. City Manager, thanks again. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Ellis. Call the roll, please.
Dispense with the charter requirement, reading the ordinance and adopt. Mr. Burford.
Aye.
Mr. Protogiru.
Aye.
Mr. Riddick.
Aye.
Mr. Smigel.
Aye.
Dr. Webberly.
Aye.
Ms. Williams.
Aye.
Mr. Winn.
Aye.
Mr. Frame.
Aye.
R-3.
An ordinance accepting $45,632 in grant funds from the Virginia Department of Criminal Justice Services for the Juvenile Accountability Block Grant Program and appropriating and authorizing the expenditure of the grant funds in $5,070 in local cash matching funds for the program, for total program funding in the amount of $50,702. Dispense with the charter requirement, reading the ordinance and adopt. Mr. Burford.
Aye.
Mr. Protogiru.
Aye.
Mr. Riddick.
Aye.
Mr. Smigel.
Aye.
Dr. Webberly.
Aye.
Ms. Williams.
Aye.
Mr. Winn.
Aye.
Frame.
Aye, R-4.
An ordinance contributing a sum up to $9,000 to Riverview Village Business Association for the purchase of two sets of decorative banners, appurtenances, and installation costs, granting permission to the association to encroach into the Granby Street right-of-way between the Granby Street Bridge and 38th Street and approving the terms and conditions of the encroachment agreement.
Mr. Nuzbaum is here to answer any questions, if there is. Bill, no questions, but thanks. Okay.
Dispense with the charter requirement, reading the ordinance and adopt. Mr. Burford.
Aye.
Mr. Protogiru.
Aye.
Mr. Riddick.
Aye.
Mr. Smigel.
Aye.
Dr. Webberly.
I can't let this go by without, obviously, Bill's here, and I appreciate his support, but the one that we all need to bow down to is Alice McCoy, who has more patience than Job on this. I've been on city council for six years. My entire tenure has been spent getting these banners. This has not been our finest hour, but I think we are on the road to success. And I hope this is going to give us new impetus to try to get these projects, because this is exactly what our city should be supporting. Citizens that are trying to improve their neighborhood and work hard to beautify our streets. So I hope in the future, this is going to no longer be the case, and this is going to be the last time we have to worry about delays. So absolutely, aye.
Ms. Williams.
Aye.
Mr. Winn.
Aye.
Mr. Frame.
No, I mean, aye. R-5.
An ordinance accepting and appropriating $8,000 in grant funds, if and when received, from the E.C. Werheim Foundation and authorizing the city manager to employ one person in the position on an intermittent part-time basis for as long as grant funds allow. Dispense with the charter requirement, reading the ordinance and adopt. Mr. Burford.
Aye.
Mr. Protogiru.
Aye.
Mr. Riddick.
Aye.
Mr. Smigel.
Terry, so does this mean I have to start now to get banners in Ocean View in six years?
Oh, I think it's going to be just a nanosecond, right, Marcus?
Aye.
Dr. Webberly.
Aye.
Ms. Williams.
Aye.
Mr. Winn.
Aye.
Mr. Frame.
Aye, R-6.
R-6 is an ordinance to amend and reordain Section 25-286.1 of the city code to revise the application process, clarify decal issuance procedures, and include issuance of decals to in-home caregivers in the parking permit districts. And the request is to withdraw this matter, Mr. President.
All right, okay, motion to withdraw, go ahead.
Mr. Burford.
Aye.
Mr. Protogiru.
Aye.
Mr. Riddick.
Aye.[1300.81]